I'll open the Blackstone Middle Regional School District School Committee meeting for Thursday, March 23rd. If we could stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction of members, please.
Jack Eave, student representative.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Brittany Dwyer, student representative, Wincawee, business manager.
Steve Tringalli, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Alan Himmelberger, superintendent.
Dave Thompson, assistant superintendent.
Thank you very much. Moving to the report of our student reps. We missed you last time.
Yeah.
I know I totally decimated your email that you sent to me, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's been a busy March. The last couple of weeks, the reasons why we were out for student council from March 8th to March 10th, 16 student council members attended the annual MASC conference in Hyannis. It's a state conference. It's a really great way for kids to find leadership opportunities and to learn to be a better leader in their community and their school. There, Anita Leahy, who is a junior this year and the vice president of our student council, ran for vice president of the State Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. She did unfortunately get second in that, but she did receive a delegate position on the state E-board, and she is the first person ever in our school to do that. So, we're very happy for her.
As a footnote, I slightly expect her to be one of the two of us next year as she is also significantly inclined. I could not be here because I was busy being my dashing self onstage at Band-Aid on my -- that is by principle council every year. It's just a place where if you have more bands, you go to perform and raise some money for senior scholarships, so we raised over $600 for that this year.
So, last week, actually recently, we've had a lot going on with the senior class. Last week, on March 16th, was the annual Mr. BMR held by the senior class. I was one of the emcees for the night. We had some great new things such as David's Bridle and Men Warehouse. They helped us out with some suits and tuxes and dresses, which was really great. We raised over $1,000 for our class, which can go to our banquet, our gowns, et cetera, that kind of stuff that's coming up soon. It was always a very successful event, excuse me. The senior class is also selling prom tickets for the junior senior prom, which is on March, I mean, excuse me, April 13th, and everyone's very excited about that, so.
And so, sports start this week. Track and field, softball, baseball, tennis, and boys lacrosse are having their tryouts beginning this week, and we expect that to be a full swing in a couple of weeks.
And were you your dashing self for Mr. BMR as well?
I was not.
You did not.
I had no idea lighting for Mr. BMR, so.
Yeah.
The machinery in that lighting booth requires well-trained people. Thankfully, Mr. Schaefer was able to train me well in music technology when I took that class, so I know how to operate all the bomb-proof machines up there.
You did make a guest star as a drummer, though.
I did. I was onstage drumming for one of Mr. BMRs. I took a win. I was seeing a large one. I drummed in his act, so I gave full credit for it.
Can you just say that on camera?
Any questions for our student reps?
How many more days till graduation?
Graduation, I'm not sure. School days, I think it's 34 or 33 now. So, count-down is beginning.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the floor for our first public forum. If there was anyone here that wanted to address us, you could certainly come to the table. All right, moving forward to consent agenda A.
Did you want to come up?
Well, I am here. This is the first time I've been to a town where there's names.
Sure, sure.
So, I was sure I couldn't even find it.
Okay.
So, after driving around town.
You can actually come to the table, give us your name and the town you're from.
Blackstone. Okay, I'm here to address safety issues primarily at the high school as far as traffic flow, but it could also be addressed at the elementary level, too.
Okay.
I am a town resident, have been for 25 years. I've had no less than at least one kid in the school system for 25 years, and I also work in a -- for driving challenged kids to special school programs. So, now that it's a big thing here, it should, I think it's a serious safety issue that should be addressed. So, after speaking to the principal several times and the superintendent once, I was advised to come to a school board meeting and put it out there, and I, again, don't know what to do or say. You ask me questions, I don't know. I've never been to a meeting, so I'm not here as a worker. I'm here as a town resident, and I've got kids from age of 30 to 14. So, again, I'm here as a parent, as a resident, as a concerned citizen, however you want to put it.
Okay.
But I do have the knowledge.
And you've already spoken to the building principal and superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess we need to hear what the safety concern is.
The traffic flow of the high school, safety-wise, is not good.
Drop-off, pickup, buses.
Okay, they have one attempt at a sign that is not out on a daily basis that says "No student drop-off or pickup." It's not out daily, definitely not out daily, and when it is out, it's usually blocked by a parent who obviously can't read or buses, which is understandable. So, my concerns here are proper signage, and the front of the building should be made one-way, and it's kind of sort of like a golden rule in town that it is one-way until people decide they don't want to go with the flow, and then they just do what they want. And being that I have driven to this school, I can tell you the biggest culprits are the staff, like secretaries, they don't, you know, other staff members. I watch them go in with their briefcases and go up the stairs and do their thing after they've done their thing in the parking situation or the driving situation. Then you have students in the afternoon who drive to and from school, and they have no common sense when it comes to driving. I've already had three trained, and at 16 to 18-years-old, they don't care that you're blocking an inner route. They don't care. They will blatantly look in your face, laugh at you, and flip you off. So, there's signage needed there, too. Do not block. So, one-way makes things much safer, a one-way flow. But if it's not labeled, people can do what they want because they can. So, signs that say "Do not block," you know? Again, not everybody's going to adhere to it, but if the signage is up, it's a bigger deal. If there's no signs saying "Don't do this" or "Do that," it's a free-for-all. And with the caliber of the challenged kids that are attending the high school right now, they run. They don't hear, they don't listen. Their issues are severe, some of these kids. So, and I have a 27-year-old nephew with Down Syndrome. So, again, before I was in this field or that field, or even a mother, well, a mother too, but you know what I'm saying? I've been to many, many schools in driving these kids, and there's always big signs. There's always a separate entrance and exit for these kids to keep them that much safer, so on and so forth. So, unless somebody comes and says to you guys, "Hey, something's going to happen here, and it's not going to be good," you don't know. It's new to Blackstone. North Attleboro had the BIKO program for years, and it ran like clockwork, and there's the Finnberg in Attleboro, and there's this Foxhoro School. I mean, I can list a whole list of schools that I've driven to, and they've always had proper signage. They've always had a separate side door or something like that for these kids to go and come and go, which keeps them away from the teenage drivers who are doing this and this while they're fighting the buses to let them out. The only change up here for safety I've seen in 20-plus years is the stop sign. That's it.
So, could I just reiterate your concerns?
Yeah.
For the committee? So, the safety issues are proper signage for primarily the high --
Do's, don'ts, yeah.
Okay? It's that it's not out daily, and the traffic flow primarily at the front of the building. The concerns are for pretty much anybody entering the building. You had mentioned a few others, but the primary problem is anybody entering that building, whether you say staff, whether you say students, it's primarily anybody who's entering that building.
It's anybody who decides they want to be.
And then the concern is because of the challenging students that we have and the BIKO that's entering.
The caliber of these kids. These aren't just behavioral kids. I mean, I drove a Down Syndrome boy, and these kids don't always listen to their parents, and that's where it starts. And it's not that we're talking about bad parents. We're talking about challenges that will divert them at the drop of a dime. I mean, I had, I've got an amazing sign who I took at 6-years-old up to Mount Cranmore to teach him how to ski, and here's his no learning disabilities, and "Do this right and don't do that," and he's going, "Hey, look at this." He's not challenged. So, now you're dealing with kids and people on a bigger scale. So, in order to keep them as safe as, in any of our kids, because now our kids are dealing with cell phones and their iPods and their everything, and everyone is distracted now, and these teenage drivers don't care. They won't. I'm telling you, a lot of them are just blatantly like, mm, whatever. So, they block that entrance. The procedure is, when the big yellow buses leave, then all the special needs buses pull up. They can't go anywhere because the teenagers have it so blocked off. They're at a stop sign. Those yellow buses have the precedence. They will sit there and keep everything and everyone blocked from getting assembled and getting ready for the next flow for nothing. For why? Where are you going? It's a stop sign. Those yellow buses have the right-of-way. So, there's a whole bunch of no-common-sense up there. And I hope, I'm trying to like, get my point across without, because I'm a little nervous, but these are really blatant fact, they're real big factors up there.
Was there another building that you?
Well, the JFK and the, see, now, it's my understanding, or my oldest broke his leg once. He was coming and going from a, I'm still thinking I'm at the high school, there's an entrance off to the side of the parking lot. If you're facing the school, it's on the far left. So, if that's a valid entrance/exit to send those buses to and have those kids coming in and out of, food for thought. Keep them away from the front of the buildings and everyone in town, parents, staff, students, who don't, can't, obviously can't read or have no common sense. So, it's a possible solution, but the signage is still needed. There's no need for these drivers to be blocking anything, least of all buses. Even though we're not a big yellow bus does not mean we don't have this. We still have to abide by the same rules and the same laws that dictate a big yellow bus. The only difference is, we have a 7D driving license, not a CDL. That is the only difference. We still have to take our tasks. We still have to pass them. We still have to, defensive driving, CPR for a state, anything they have to do, we got to do. But because we're in a minivan or a big, you know, extended Ford van, nobody cares. Nobody looks at the signs, and I can't tell you how many days I have stood next to my van pointing to my flashing lights as people pull in and go right by you. And I stand with my hand out the window, the lights, the lights. Nobody cares.
Where do you drop off at JFK right now?
Well, last year I did JFK. I did the middle school. I did JFK and Maloney, and it's where the yellow buses go. But, again, they take precedence, and then you've got other people that just want it, and they, there's no respect for any vehicle with a student sign unless it's a big yellow bus. So, over there, they have sign entrances also at both sides. So, that's my thing. Over here, I did this school one year, and we pull up on the side over here. We're not in their way for the big buses. We're not in the student pickup/drop-off area. So, it's, like I said.
At the high school, did all the students enter from the front door?
Mm-hmm.
I believe there's, they go either upstairs or down.
Up the big stair, up the staircase, and that's kind of shaky sometimes. If these kids come out and then they're on a mission because they're trying to block everything, those stairs could be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's why I suggest that side entrance. The other side near the band room would be fruitless because of the student drivers.
Okay. Thank you for taking your time.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't just, like I said, I just didn't know what to do or say.
We appreciate, we appreciate that you've definitely gone through
The channels.
The channels, and, you know, I, it is something we will definitely be talking about.
It's, it is, you know, I know, I take my job very seriously, but it affects all of us. God, God forgive us. One of our kids could be crossing and something could happen. And thank you, God, you know, my kids are so-called normal, I'd like to say, but, you know, it could be any of us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other public forum requests? I feel like I moved too fast. All right, so now moving on to consent agenda A. Warrants, field trip requests, and minutes of meeting for March 9th. Is there any questions, comments, or requests to separate?
No.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda A as it is written.
Do I need to abstain since I wasn't at that meeting?
You may.
Do you want to separate out minutes, please?
So, we'll do warrants and field trips.
Sorry.
Make motion to approve some warrants and the field trip.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jane and second by Wendy. Any discussion?
Hi.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Okay, and a motion for the minutes for March 9th. Tara is abstaining since she was not here for the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ananmas. And next item on our agenda is under the school committee for the approval of the student food service accounts policy. So, we discussed this at our last meeting, and we can either have a motion to waive the three readings, or if someone would like to read it tonight.
We actually don't need three readings. I don't know where that came from, but it's not in our policy.
Awesome.
We can read it one, and we can quote it the next, or we can waive that, but I think we should read it. So, would you like it read?
Sure. If you're volunteer.
Whole thing.
Got it, Jane.
Policy.
Okay.
Take a drink of water first.
Maybe Bill should read it.
Maybe we should start over there. We can go around and share. I'll start with the first paragraph, though, if you want, and when I stop, Wendy's going to go. So, policy, students, food services accounts, blocks on Middle Regional. School committee establishes the following goals: to establish a consistent district policy regarding the method of payment for meals, charge availability and collection methods for charges in the district's meal program, to treat all students with dignity at all times, to support positive interactions with students, parents, guardians, and district staff to the maximum extent possible, to encourage parents, guardians to assume the responsibility of payments, and to promote self-responsibility of the student.
The district is responsible for ensuring that the food services accounts are properly managed and accurately reported. The administration will closely monitor student's school meal accounts with the goal of having all in good standing, thus eliminating negative balances and delinquent accounts. Parents/guardians will strongly be encouraged to make payments via the online payment system. By registering for an account, parents and guardians can choose to receive email alerts to low balances, set up automatic deposits to the student's account, or schedule payments to add funds to the student account. The district administration will provide annual notice of how to access the online payment system. If student accounts have a balance or account of zero or more, negative accounts, deficit accounts, balance in account less than zero, delinquent, and the account which has a negative balance and no contact, or payments have been received from student or parents, guardians, or student's亲属, or students.
Student accounts, under no circumstances will a student be denied a lunch or receive an alternative lunch. That's sort of the teeth of it right there. That's what we've been talking about.
That was part of the conversation.
So, under no circumstances will a student be denied a lunch or receive an alternative lunch.
And then blocks on accounts. Parents, guardians make contact in writing the food services manager to place a block on their student's account to prohibit the purchase of à la carte items or to set a dollar cap for daily spending. Refunds. For any student who has withdrawn, a written request for a refund of any funds remaining in the student's account must be submitted. For students who are graduating, a refund may be issued with a written request, or funds can be transferred to a sibling's account with a written request. Remaining balances. Any positive balance may remain on account to be used in the following school year, be transferred to a sibling's account, or be refunded to a parent/guardians with written request.
Deficit accounts. When a student's account deficit exceeds the cost of five lunches in the elementary level and two lunches at the middle and high school level, the food service manager or designee will send a letter or email to the parent/guardian requesting immediate payment. Will, if applicable, assist the family in applying for free and reduced-priced lunch. If the balances continue to escalate and if there are no mitigating factors, and the parent/guardian has not made any payment in an effort to reduce the negative balance or fails to bring the student's account in good standing within 14 days of the first deficit notice, the administration may take the following actions: deem the account delinquent, refer the account to a collection agency, initiate a claim in the court system, or notify other appropriate state agencies.
If a student's account is not in good standing at the end of the school year, the administration may take one or more of the following actions unless or until prohibited by the state law or regulation. Delay the issuance of report cards, transfer cards, and class assignments until or unless the negative or delinquent balance is paid in full. Refer the account to a collections agency. Initiate a claim in the court system and/or contact the mass district attorney's office. Notify other appropriate state agencies. If a senior's account is not in good standings as of May 1st, the administration may take the following action: prohibit student from participating in senior activities and/or graduating exercises.
So, that will count as our first reading. Did anyone want to entertain a motion to approve this policy this evening, or do we want to wait until our next meeting?
I think it's new for people, so I think.
So, we'll put this back on the agenda for our
And make sure Mrs. Sheridan.
April 13th.
Revisit.
April 13th, we'll have a revisit for that. Okay, moving forward, we have our budget proposal, approval, assessment, and certification.
Do you want to present that? Sure. Thank you very much, Mrs. Vinoco. The last three months, the leadership team, faculty and staff, school committee have been challenged by a budget process that has put us in severe jeopardy due to factors many beyond our control at the state and federal level. We are seeing our revenues, our reimbursements, and grants declining, and we are seeing our expenditures increasing. This combination has put the district at a crossroads. From 2009 to 2017, our general fund budget grew by a net of 4.9%. So, over the past eight years, our budget has averaged 6 tenths of 1% for an increase. In four of the eight years, the budget was reduced, and I'm talking about the general fund operating budget, was reduced from the year before. We are not affluent by any means, but as you will hear, we have talented and dedicated, hard-working professionals who do their best every single day to provide our students, your children, your grandchildren, with the best, very best education we can. And this district does have plenty to celebrate. But our challenge as a district, as a leadership team, as a school committee, as taxpayers, as voters, is to support our district. Again, I want to thank the leadership team for being here tonight. If we moved our budget forward from this year to next as a level service, meaning not adding a thing, not changing staff, not increasing any curriculum or technology, that increase would be very close to $1 million, primarily due to the fact that we have far fewer offsets and reimbursements. So, we are at a crossroads because we have had a budget that has not increased substantially or even incrementally in small amounts consistently. So, we are looking at a very, very challenging environment. As you will hear, the budget that I am recommending and I am proposing does not address many of our issues, but it allows us to maintain what we have for the most part. We are behind in some of our curriculum implementation to meet our standards. We are behind in our technology, both in infrastructure and in how we use it. We have worked hard over the last two and a half years, Dr. Thompson, myself, and the leadership team, with the school committee, to maintain what we have and to continue to grow the education for all of our students. So, if I could, I think I'd like to ask the elementary principals to come up and just to speak to where we are and what it might look like if we can't maintain a number that will sustain us going forward. So, if I could have, it doesn't matter who goes first. Start from the highest grades and work down. I got it. So, we have Mr. Dudak, our high school principal, and Mr. Cameron, our middle school principal. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just very briefly, on behalf of all the principals in the district, we'd just like to present Steve and Bill with a card for the last meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for your services. One of the senior members, one of the principals of Zest, presenting to you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Now you can't.
There's still no money, Justin. There's still no money, Justin.
Is that signed from Dave and I?
Oh, yeah. Just want to make sure I gave the right one to.
So, thanks again for having us here today. I apologize, but I'd like to start, and I do need to leave right away. I have a commitment that I need to be back in Worcester. But I'd like to start by saying, there's this African proverb that always comes to mind during budget season, and it states, "It takes a village to raise a child." And similarly, I feel that it takes a community to build and maintain excellent schools and school districts. Every year, we're going through this battle. Every year, we're talking about what we're going to cut from our budget, and it's pretty difficult for all of us to be able to sit down, look at what we're going to cut, and how that's going to affect teaching and learning. So, I just, I just wanted to start with that. I think, again, and learning. So I just wanted to start with that. I think, again, our goal as educators, and this is for all of us, is to provide an excellent educational learning opportunity for all students. Why? Our students don't deserve anything less than what's excellent. This budget that we have in front of us will not support an excellent school district. The superintendent of schools is saying, "We want to maintain what we're doing," at the very least, and that is something that we need to think about. Our students, once again, K through 12, pre-K through 12, the alumni that say that they graduated from BMR High School should be proud of where they graduated from. Today's world's different than yesterday. We need to prepare students for their next journey of life. So again, I always bring up my four Rs. But this means that students need to see the relevance in education, and that looks at our electives. We need to experience rigor in the classrooms, and at the high school, we're talking about AP, AP, AP. We need to build relationships with our staff or have relationships with staff, and students need to have that with their peers. So when we talk about social-emotional learning, and we talk about guidance counselors, and we talk about school psychologists, that is necessary for our kids. We also talk about athletics, and music, and art, and theater. Those are all what's going to keep positive relationships with our kids. And finally, for us, in the world that we live in, students need to realize their potential. Oftentimes, I have ninth graders that come up and tell me they're not going to college. They're not going to get a quality job that they enjoy. They're just going to work, make money, and pay the bills. And in four years' time, we have students that believe in who they are and do more than what they go coming into. So once again, we've experienced, my time here, in five years, we've experienced a budget, or I've experienced a budget, that I feel is below average. And that's something that is disappointing. We need to look at... So what I'd like to do right now is just provide some numbers to really depict and describe who we have here for students and what we have at the high school. I'll try to be as brief as possible. So BMR, at the high school, we had one of 425 school districts in the U.S. and Canada to be placed on the AP District Honor Roll for achieved increase in access to AP courses for a broader number of students. 275 student athletes participate in 19 MIAA-approved sports. 182... So BMR's Advanced Placement Program has tripled in the amount of exams taken since 2012. We now have 152 exams that were administered in 2016, which is a 182 percent increase. Two BMR High School students earned All-State Status selected by the Mass. Music Educators' Association, and I believe it's still coming, but they will be performing at Boston Symphony Hall in the spring. Seventy-nine percent of our class of 2016 was accepted to college post-secondary programs that include Duke, BU, and WPI. Beginning this year, BMR began to implement our one-to-one learning program, offering Chromebooks to students in 9th through 10th grades, and next year, our goal is to provide that for all of our kids at the high school. Sixty BMR students participate in the Recognized Gold Medal Student Council. Several members have taken on regional and state leadership roles. Brittany Dwyer mentioned that. These numbers describe a district and a school that's excellent. It doesn't describe a below-average district. Our staff and the adults that are in our building have allowed for these numbers to come forward where I can proudly, as a high school principal, show this to the community. And we're going to continue to increase if we have a budget that supports our school. Mr. Helberger just mentioned, we've had a budget increase that's not even at one percent. There's only so much that our staff and adults in our building can do. And we need a budget, once again, that's going to support all kids, all programs, all schools. We had our NIESC accreditation visit in October of 2015, which was a great opportunity for individual members, educators from the Northeast to come out to the high school and talk about what we do well and things that we need to improve on. I want to be able to highlight a few of those because I have to write a special progress report by April 1st, which is coming up in a few days, to address the needs that they highlighted in their report. But the committee commends the school in the following, and there's a bunch of bullet points, but I'm going to limit some of these. The taught curriculum that emphasizes high levels of inquiry, problem-solving, higher-order thinking skills in AP honors and advanced classes, the visibility of core values and beliefs on a school-wide scale, the positive school culture that allows students to feel safe, respected, and supported, the charge-a-strong program that engages and challenges all students to achieve the school's 21st century learning expectations, the hard work of the custodial staff in keeping the building clean on a daily basis. Our building's 1969. And the partnerships formed between the school and the local community that benefit students by giving them internship opportunities. Again, that's a free program. Businesses don't ask for that. We think of creative, innovative ways to provide as much as we can for students, and that's one way that we've been able to handle the budget that we receive. Quote, "Nevertheless, the committee expressed concern regarding the school's adherence to the standards of school resources for learning and community resources for learning. Concerns include, but are not limited to, the following: the lack of a full-time library media specialist. Luckily, our budget supported a library media specialist or integrated technologist in our building at the high school, and she's phenomenal." So that one, to me, is an easy thing that we can go look at. But the next one, I feel, will really drive where we go and how I report, on the lack of dependable funding provided by the community and the district's governing body for a wide range of programs and services: sufficient professional PD, support staff to meet and learning the needs of the individual students, ongoing PD and curriculum revisions, sufficient technology support, sufficient equipment, instructional materials, and supplies. And because of what they've reviewed when they were out here, given those concerns, the committee voted to place the school on warning for the standard... So again, this is the standard and not the entire program, on the community resources for learning, and have the school remain on warning for the standard on school resource for learning until they feel that the school district in the community that we live in or that you all live in will support our kids. Again, I just want to be able to highlight a few things that have been cut. I'm not going to be discussing anything that's been... that will potentially be cut based off of where our numbers are, but that's the unfortunate situation that we're all in. Foreign language. We had to cut a teacher, which affected our French program. We no longer offer French to freshmen and sophomores, and that'll be phased out with our juniors and seniors taking French 3 and 4. Foods and nutrition that we used to have, where students went to Johnson &amp; Wales and got accepted into a culinary arts program, no longer exists. Business and marketing, personal finance, accounting, no longer exist at the high school. You see before you highly ambitious, motivated, determined leaders and administrators with excellent staff and students. I truly believe this because when I came on board five years ago, I asked the superintendent, "Where do you want to see this school district in five to 10 years?" Superintendent mentioned, "I want to turn an average district into a district that can be an exemplary district for all to see." I believe that. No one, I firmly believe this, no one wants to work in a school district that's average. No one wants to send a student that's going to a school district that's average. No one wants to participate in a program that is average. And we're talking about a below-average budget. Small towns can produce great and excellent schools. I'm hoping that those numbers that I just articulated with you can prove to the community that we have something going that's really going in the right direction, but we need a budget to be able to sustain that. And if you don't believe me, I think if you look at what we say here proudly, we have a two-time national champion marching band that models excellence. So if you don't believe that, look at those kids, 6 through 12, that work hard and show the community how proud they are of where they are. Our community deserves better, and I want that to happen. I will stop right there.
Thank you. So I just want to commend Mr. Dudak on talking on behalf of all the schools and the staff here in the district. I echo a lot of what he says. Some of what I will share has potential impacts district-wide, just not for the middle school, but I will speak on behalf of the middle school as well. My starting point, I guess, though, we'll just talk about, you know, the pockets of brilliance that we have throughout the district. Mr. Dudak mentioned the marching band. There are many pockets of brilliance. There are many reasons for us to celebrate as a district. You know, I come and taught for almost 10 years in a very high-performing district that was a very affluent community. And to this day, I don't know if that community and that district can compete with the amount of awards and recognition that this district has had in my seven to eight years here. And where we are as a leadership team, and I think where you all are as a committee, is almost in a place of struggling to share these pockets of celebration because sadly, some look at that and say, "Wow, you know, in a district that, for the last nine years, has averaged a half a percent or so increase in general fund budget, they're finding ways to do it." And that's my struggle. You know, the interim superintendent, three years ago, pulled me aside and talked, you know, in a very straightforward way about the PTO in the middle school. And he said, you know, "Justin, your PTO is doing too much in support of what a school committee and the towns should be supporting in your building." You know, it's one thing, and they did after Dr. Davis left, it's one thing if they want to fundraise for a sign and place it out. The PTO here at the middle school is approaching, in the years that I have been in the principal's office, almost $200,000 raised for the students and staff here at the middle school. But other than the sign, I don't really see much that is tangible. Instead, I see a lot of it embedded in the learning and a lot of it embedded in the activities. The same learning and the same activities that Dr. Davis said to me, very straightforwardly, that the towns should be supporting. What's happening here is a fatigue with doing more with less that we have seen and that we have been trying to support now for many years. Every year, we gather as a district, we gather as schools, we gather as a leadership team, we take a look at the present cuts that are in front of us, and we all ask ourselves the question, "How will we still maintain an excellent school, an excellent district?" And we find a way. But we're in a place where we're really struggling. You have before you something that is very rare, even in Massachusetts education. You have a leadership team, you have a group of principals who have been together for almost six years straight. That's remarkable. That doesn't happen. But you also have a group of principals and leaders who are fatigued, very much fatigued and very much frustrated because when we share out these celebrations, we have people in the towns who receive that information as, "Okay, well, they're just fine." And I think you're hearing from us, and you will hear from the elementary school principals, that we're not fine. We're very proud here at the middle school to have a middle school philosophy, but that foundation is on shaky, shaky, shaky ground. Since I have been in the position of principal, there has been seven positions at the middle school that have been cut that have not been restored. Those positions quickly are two technology positions. We currently have no technology teacher, a sixth-grade math position, a French position, a special education position, and that was not a sub-separate program. That was what I would refer to as a mainstream special educator, a STEM rotation teacher, and a sixth-grade history teacher. All those positions, so seven positions in the past six years, have not been restored. Just like our extracurricular, we are finding a way to maintain. I give school tours, I gave one this afternoon, for potential school-choice families, and I smile and I share the success that we share as a district and we share as a middle school. But I am also very, very concerned that we're moving forward yet again with a budget that is looking at significant cuts in the areas of supplies, materials, and no opportunity to move forward. I will end on just a little reflection. Versha Desai talked very poignantly about how important a middle school philosophy is for a district. I just want to share some support and my concern and the concern that all the teachers have at the middle school, that a area of fiscal importance has not been placed in the elementary years, in the RTI process, in the targeted intervention, and in for the reading specialists. We see that here at the middle school. We were very fortunate to have the support of a progress monitoring system under Starz and Renaissance Learning that has given us some real-time data, that we have some students who are significantly behind in math and reading. In this budget, yet again, every single year, any interventions that we're looking to place at the elementary level, at the middle school level, to get them, you know, those interventions early before they reach up at the high school, always seem to be cut. And that's, you know, not the fault of a committee that's sitting in front of us because this committee, along with the superintendent, is charged to cut something. Every year, what are the cuts? And that is a concern because, again, I will end with this. There is a significant fatigue happening in this district with all the staff, from paraprofessionals to kitchen service workers to custodians. All of us have a fatigue of doing more with less. Thank you.
Could you please highlight for us the difference between teams and an actual junior high school?
Yes.
And if you don't mind throwing in there how you're actually able to maintain that with the tremendous number of positions that you just listed that have been eliminated.
Yeah, so we... Well, let me start with just the dichotomy between a junior high school that does not have the capacity or a master's schedule that allows teachers to come together and collaborate and talk about the whole child, talk about the academic child, but also the social and emotional child. So you have junior high schools out there that have that capacity, that have that opportunity for adults to get together and say, "Okay, we all have Sammy Jones. Let's talk about her from an emotional standpoint and a learning standpoint." There are junior high schools, though, that choose not to do that. Those junior high schools have departments. They're organized similar to a high school. Right now, the number of core teachers that we have, we are on very thin ice with our teaming model. Our teaming model is compromised in the sixth grade... Our teaming model is compromised in the sixth grade, it's compromised in the eighth grade. The same teaming model that I market, that I put out there, that I get together with my team leaders and I say to them, you know, how do we share that the transition from elementary to middle, the transition from a parent having two, three teachers to six or seven, isn't actually all that bad based upon the philosophy we have as a middle school? Case in point, we have a website, a one homework, one-school website, where a teacher or parent or a child can click on one link to get all the homework from that child's team. If the child has not assigned a team, we don't have that. It's the junior high model. It's, I have six teachers, I'm going to six teachers' websites, four of them have logins. So when you have a junior high school philosophy, you don't have the opportunity to say, as a parent, okay, who are my five or six, you know, child's teachers? They can choose, the parent can choose, to call the team leader. One person who will say, we meet three times a week and we welcome you to come in those three times a week, which is what we advertise when we have to close some of our parents out on parent-teacher conferences as well. Because in this building, we're able to offer that conference, one, mind you, not five, with five different teachers at a point sometime in the week. So the compromise that is really not out there and advertised is if we have a team meeting in sixth grade and a parent, a sixth-grade parent right now asks me where Mrs. Maurice is, it was because of the cut that was made in 2015 with that sixth-grade math teacher. If I have an eighth-grade teacher who asks for a team meeting and she looks at empty chair and says, where is my son's history teacher? I believe his name is Mr. Hook. The team leader will have to say, he's teaching seventh grade right now, because we have a teacher, Mr. Hook, who is teaching seventh and eighth grade. With any more cuts in core teachers at the middle school, two cuts would result in four to five teachers teaching cross-grade. Three cuts would result in six to seven teachers teaching cross-grade, because, mind you, I have to keep them in their discipline. It is not as simple as an elementary model where they can teach five different classes, the five core classes. They have to stay in their discipline, and they would be cross-grade, and you would walk around in these hallways where you would walk into an English hallway, a science hallway, a math hallway, and that again is more of a junior high or a high school model.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any, any follow-up questions for?
Could I just, could I just add to what Mr. Cameron said? When you talk about a middle school model, you're talking about a developmentally appropriate model where kids are working with the same group of teachers with a similar philosophy and a similar expectation. Middle school children are not developmentally ready to be moving around an entire school with different sets of expectations and not a coordinated effort to make sure that child is making progress. When you go to a junior high, you see increased discipline, increased social-emotional problems, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and a downgrading of the school. So I just wanted to add that to Mr. Cameron's comments.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that say something?
Sure.
For Mr. Dudek. Oh, I think, you don't have to stand there, but I just, I think it's really important, you know, we talk about what the impact might be to the students, what the impact might be to the classroom, and I think that what the impact to our leadership team might be with these cuts, you know, Justin talked about fatigue, but it's beyond that. I mean, you know, you can only do so much. I'm very proud of those two principals that just sat there. I mean, they're our bright, one's a national principal of the year or whatever. You know, we...
Whatever.
But, you know...
MSSAA.
Thank you. He'll tell ya, no. But we don't, we don't celebrate them enough, and we are asking them to do too much with nothing. And, you know, we, we have towns that say, we're asking them to do too much with what they don't have, but it's their children, it's their grandchildren, it's their, and these men and the women that will follow them and the gentlemen that will follow them, they, they've given their lives to this district, and we haven't given that back.
Thank you.
And sort of a similar but related thing, it's interesting to see two of them come up together. And then later we'll see the elementary principals come up together. I think it's because we've cut so much, they've leaned on each other. And you can see, they really are a team, they're not fragmented, they work together and they mesh. There are some other districts that are not like that. They have tunnel vision and, this is my building, I really don't care what you're doing. But you can see, they insist on presenting together and they are together. It's not an act, it's how they operate day in and day out. And it's, and you've had to do that, because you've had to lean on each other. I mean, how many superintendents have there been in the last seven years? But yet, you've stayed and you've kind of bonded together.
I've had three.
Yeah?
We thank you for staying.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dudek and Mr. Cameron. I'd like to have Mrs. Desai and Mrs. Brown and Dr. Hahey, please come up. These are our elementary principals, and I think you will see, as they, as they put forth what's on their mind, a similar determination to do the very best for all of our students. Welcome and thank you.
Well, as I was sitting in my office for the past few days, I was thinking about, what do I want to say tonight? And I really didn't have any conversations with anyone about it. And as I was sitting here listening to Mr. Dudek and Mr. Cameron, I realized, oh my goodness, those are my notes. So when you talk about being a solid team, we are indeed that. And I am very, very proud to be sitting among these amazing leaders. I also was thinking about something that I think you said, Mrs. Reggio, last year. You talked about our students, who are members of our community, and they will be the ones who will someday take care of us. They will be our doctors. They will be working in our town. They deserve the very best education that we can provide them. And I have to tell you that when I hear about the successes at the middle school and the high school, those students came from our elementary schools. And we couldn't be prouder of what our students have accomplished, and we also can't be prouder of our teachers. So when we talk about fatigue, I, I am absolutely compelled to talk about the amount of effort and time that our teachers put into what it is they do. I am astounded by the fact that they are fatigued, that they are frustrated, that they are tired, that they are working with the bare minimum, and we are still able to achieve what we achieve. But I am telling you that that only lasts so long. And if we are losing the ability to build these solid foundations of skills that these kids need to move on to the middle and high school and beyond, where does that leave our kids? I, I would say that it's borderline educational neglect. We don't know the future that lies before them, but what we do know is no matter what it is they do, they need to be able to read, they need to be able to write, they need to be able to understand what numbers represent, they need to be able to know how to manipulate numbers, they need to think critically, they need to problem-solve, they need to communicate. These are all the skills, all of these foundational skills that we build at the elementary level. We've had a commitment, thank you for the math program, we're seeing the benefits of that. We're seeing our students thinking as mathematicians. Our teachers have worked incredibly hard with any new program that you adopt, it's a steep learning curve. It changed the way we taught, it changed the way that kids were learning, it changed how they demonstrate learning, it changed how they talked about math. We had a commitment for our literacy initiative. Teachers have spent countless hours developing the units around the themes. It wasn't a program that was just handed to them and you just follow page by page. We developed our leveled bookroom. We've spent... What did we say, almost twenty...
A bookroom alone around $30,000.
Around $30,000. We have an incredible bookroom, and I think I shared that our literacy consultants commended us on what we were able to do with the help of teachers and some amazing volunteers. We have a resource. But it doesn't mean because you have a resource, it doesn't mean that you stop and status quo is okay. You never want to be treading in the water, because as soon as you stop that treading, you start to sink. We have to look at, and I know, I think you're going to talk about science, but we don't have a significant amount of science resources. And Mrs. Desai will talk more about the new science standards and how that's going to impact us. We need to move forward with the writing curriculum. And it's an integral part of our literacy program. Good readers are good writers and good writers are good readers. It's at the core of no matter what it is they do, they have to master these skills. We don't have a consistent writing program. We have not had one. So again, we look at what we've been able to achieve, it is nothing short of outstanding. But we need better and we need more. We have to provide the necessary tools to our teachers. We would not ask that of anyone else in any other profession, to go out and do your job without the tools that you need. You would not hire someone to build you a house who doesn't have the knowledge and the tools needed to build a house that's going to last. Further cuts are just going to severely impact our ability to educate our students at all levels. So I am talking about those students who, bless you, who, who, who need to be enriched and extended. We've talked about that in years prior. What do we do for those students? What do we do for the students who are struggling? Right now, we have RTI built into our schedule, but I will tell you that teachers meet, they plan, they level, but in that classroom is just that teacher. We don't, we, we, we need staffing. We need help. We need, we need to move forward. Further cuts will stop us in the water, and we will be working and expending so much energy just to stay afloat. And to me, that's just wasted energy. I just would like everyone in the community to think about, when you think about educating a child, you cannot focus just on today. Because if you focus just on today, things may not look too badly. Things are looking pretty good. But every single child in our school district will grow into an adult and a productive member of society, and we have to prepare them for that. Everything we teach, every learning experience these kids have means something. It doesn't mean that you get to, it means that you get to move on to the next screen, but it means so much more than that. It means that you're ready to move on, you're ready to learn more, you're ready to explore, you learn how to ask questions, you don't stop that curiosity for learning. We have to be able to provide those opportunities. And I worry, I worry that with a budget like this, we're not doing right by our students and we're not doing right by our teachers. Our schools are the heart of our community. And one of the things that I was most impressed by when I first started here was this community. I had never experienced anything like this before. It is truly a community. We, our kids deserve better. Our community deserves better.
And I'm worried, because I look at the trends that we're seeing in all communities, not just our own, with the added stress and anxiety that we see, even in kindergarten. And I'm not the only, I went to a conference today, and there are other principals saying the same thing. It's a societal problem. And we have children who are so structured, it starts from infancy, guys. We have baby groups, structured interventions of how to interact with your baby, then they go on to T-ball, structured dance, and so on, so forth. There is no, I shouldn't say no, there's limited free unstructured play without an adult intervention. And the damage of that decrease of free unstructured play is phenomenal. That's why we're seeing the stress, the anxiety, the social issues, the social-emotional issues everywhere in our society. And this didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. But in our schools, we need to be there to support those children, because I will tell you, the minute you go into an anxious state of fear, there's a little part in your brain called the amygdala, that's the center for focused attention, it shuts down your ability to attend, because it goes into that fight-or-fight mode, your pulse increases, your blood pressure goes up, your muscles are tense and you're ready for a response, and no learning is taking place, because all that blood flow that you need in your brain has gone elsewhere to prepare you for the fight. So when you have these little, little children who are anxious and fearful and stressed because of the social skills that just haven't evolved, because of that, all that learning that takes play, unstructured play, you'd be amazed how much social interactions are developed, their ability to negotiate, the ability to share, the ability to handle it when a child says, I don't want to play with you. You either learn self-advocacy or you learn, okay, I'm going to go do something else, I don't need to play with you. Those things happen in an unstructured time without us wonderful interfering adults. And along with those kind of play skills, you've got the imagination, the cognitive skills for learning, and that self-esteem. And if you have that healthy readiness to learn, you have the ability to access academics. So I worry in a school system that if we have, first of all, it's up to the teacher now who's juggling everything. We have given them a lot on their plates, they have taken all these initiatives, made it happen, they're putting in all kinds of, not only hours of preparation, their own funds, their own funds to get the materials in their classroom for the children to have. And I'm not even going to, I can't even imagine how much money they spend. I walk into those classrooms and I'm going to tell you, we haven't provided it to them as a district. They have purchased it on their own. And now we say, oh, and you have to address the social-emotional needs, which requires other skill sets, other ways, you have to integrate it into the curriculum. I went with the kindergarten teachers, three of them today, to present with Mrs. Doyle, Mrs. Dorfman, Mrs. Riley, to MASP on this exact topic, and they talked about how they are meeting the social-emotional skills and needs within kindergarten with the academics. But the amount of preparation and work and resources that takes has come out of their pockets. And the benefits they're seeing for our children already, and this is the first year they've done it, they're seeing more and more children who are able to look at each other and say, oh, well, let's go to the conflict resolution and figure out how to, you know, when they find that they can't, when they're stuck with their ability to figure things out, they're using the resources in the classroom. Yet, it's not enough. We have more and more children who need support from the psychologists, the adjustment counselors, and our BCBA. Our BCBA supports district-wide. That's a lot to put on someone, given what society, and it's not just our school district, given what we have. Our school psychologists, again, is spending a lot of the time doing those assessments, but we need that expertise to work with children, to do some counseling, to build that self-esteem, that sense of self, to address those needs. And so I'm worried about that. I'm worried about that, because again, with everything else, social-emotional, it takes resources, it takes staffing, and we are very, very lean, and it is getting more and more challenging. And we are very, very lean and it is getting more and more challenging. And I'm seeing more and more teachers who are doing their very best for children who don't even have identified needs, but who are in a regular classroom with significant emotional needs. And the staff are in my office frustrated and crying because they don't know what else to do and the experts who can help them are doing their best as well. This is our situation and if we don't address it at the foundation of an elementary school, it just builds on up the ranks and it's much harder to address the older the child gets. Not impossible, but it's more challenging. And as Mrs. Brown said, science, science is near and dear to my heart. And when I look at our new science standards, I love them, yet I'm going to tell you, we have to completely throw out how we've been teaching science in elementary school, get some resources. It is rigorous. If you follow these standards, you have to have the ability to think critically. You cannot just think critically by, I mean, we say integrate science through all the subjects. So yes, you're going to have literature, but that's one small piece of it. You have to also have the mathematical skills. You also have to be able to write. A good scientist has to be able to write and express themselves. And a good scientist needs to get their hands on materials, explore, be curious, ask the questions. The teachers will need materials to do demonstrations that will help build those concepts with the, and scaffolding with higher order thinking questions till you get to, "Oh, I get it." It takes resources. Possibly, you know, there are some science kits and whatnot that would help with that, but that's a starting point. Right now, I'm going to tell you, I don't think we have purchased, since I've been here in six years, any type of science resources. And I keep hearing, back in the day, there was actually a science prep where they did use foscates, but those foscates are long gone and they've been dismantled. So that piece again comes back on the teachers. And science, to teach it properly, you have to be able to get those resources. You have to have professional development for staff to truly work on what is proper inquiry. We think we're doing inquiry when we ask questions. In science, I'll tell you now, because I self-assessed when I taught fifth and eighth grade science, a lot of what I thought was doing inquiry was leading questions that was disguised very nicely. It's very hard to truly have the ability to ask an open-ended inquiry question without having that type of professional development support for staff because you have to practice, you have to learn, you have to talk to each other and not be alone. And so I am concerned because when you look at this thick book of science standards, it is a work of art. Every student deserves this because up the ranks, the best careers that everybody wants with the creativity, the innovation involves some degree of math, science, and writing and reading, all of it. I used to have students come into my science class in eighth grade and say, "Mrs. Desai, why are you making us write?" Because I said, "A good scientist, what do you think, who writes those abstracts that I'm sharing with you at times?" You have to be able to write. Why do you need math? Because you have to be able to represent all your findings in tables and analyze it and look at the data and look at, how am I going to present the data for the point that I want to make? This is a skill that you have to have and we plant the seeds in elementary school and you build on up. And as Mr. Doudak was saying, in high school, you want them to be able to access those, go to college and access those careers because that's where the future is. And those are the two points I was going to cover and didn't want to hog the time from you.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. So in terms of the elementary levels in the three buildings currently, Millville Elementary School sets the table for the district in that preschool is the foundation. Ages three to five, we take students from Blackstone and Millville. Mrs. Desai and I have, believe it or not, been doing this six years, looking after, she is principal originally and me is director and now me is the principal. Our preschool's top shelf, not only in the region, Blackstone Valley, but across the Commonwealth as well as across the country. We have educators that have been recognized in the region, educators that have been recognized across the Commonwealth as well as across the country. Our preschool's been an education week. Nobody else can say that in the round here. Nobody. And that's a fact and that's both sides of the district. Blackstone and Millville children, attend this program. It is one of the best. We have a teacher currently who is a semifinalist to be Massachusetts Teacher of the Year currently and Dr. Boisbert. She's already been recognized nationally last year and the other members of the faculty are lights out. They do phenomenal work and the program itself is something, as principal, and even if I was still the director, Mrs. Desai were the principal, we both would agree across the board. I can't propose any cuts to the preschool program, given the growth of the program over the last six years. And we are well-known, very well-known. Our faculty and our staff, not us, but our faculty and our staff are sought for access. They're often asked for advice. They teach at local colleges and universities, provide seminars and workshops as well. We have too, but our preschool program isn't good. It's the best. And we're very proud of that fact. They are very proud of that fact. And that said, this budget places the preschool program, along with all the other programs and services, at risk. And that's a problem. That's a real problem. Because whether it's preschool for both sides of the district or the students at Millville for K to five, we stand to have currently, without some kind of an offset created for preschool, which I believe is on the agenda for consideration later this evening, we stand to lose a position that one para, it doesn't seem like it's a lot, but one para is a lot for when you're working with ages three to five. And yet that is real. So we've done our very best to maintain our preschool program. Partnerships with the University of Colorado Denver and other higher institutions of higher learning are very well documented, as I mentioned earlier. DESI and Early Education in Children look to the MR often and our program is one of the best. But we don't have a choice because of this budget. We have to all take a part of ownership. So that is something that is going to be placed at risk. And as well, let me just add, next year across the elementaries, we risk to lose with this budget. Substitutes to cover, meetings for special education, 504s, after-school clubs, supplies, materials, professional development placed at risk and/or lost, including the PD going forward that's been highlighted in science, writing, and reading. The bookrooms are, will be gone. The monies that were earmarked and set aside after all the work that's been done over the last five and six years in the area of reading with Teachers for Teachers and our literacy initiative will be put on hold. Our teachers are trying to plan for PD. Those standards literally just came out that Mrs. Desai held up earlier. And yet, as they try to plan and work, they don't know what they're going to have for supplies and materials in the areas of science, writing, or reading. Preps, due to the number of cuts to the coverages and substitutes and others, we're unsure what the master schedule will look like for all three elementary schools and we're really not sure if we can even provide the preps that the teachers are afforded per contract. So we're going to have to go back in and look at the master schedule again to make sure that we can afford the exact coverage that is required per contract. Operations and maintenance. K to five, I will tell you, Millville is a spotless building. It is absolutely impeccable in terms of its condition. And that is not, you know, done without a lot of hard work on the part of Mr. Boyko, Mr. Lipsit, and Mr. Lanto. They work extremely hard, yet operations and maintenance, the last two years, there hasn't been one week we've had without some form of the building, a pipe, a water main, or some other issue break down and require them to jump in on a weekend, a weeknight in repair. Snowstorms, they've been here first thing and haven't left till late at night. That's all placed at risk and that's going to impact our ability to operate when we get into the more difficult winter months and into the more difficult winter seasons. They'd have limited weekend availability and opportunities to cover after-school and evening programming, allowing us to provide to the community at large, not only in Millville but Blackstone. We just had the high school ask us for our gym. That wouldn't be afforded. We could not function without appropriate staffing for that. And again, over vacation, we plan on spending a lot of our time trying to look at what this will look like because honestly, it's hard to fathom. It's really hard to consider. This is by far not the worst budget I've ever seen. I can't, I can't say that. Two thousand and one, after the tech bubble popped, I'll say that was a horrible budget year. Oh eight, after the housing crisis and what we went through then, if the ARAM money hadn't come through, I think that would have been another very difficult budget. But we seem to go through this cycle every seven, eight years and here we are again. It's cyclical and this is again, a very, very difficult budget, but it's probably not the worst. I don't want to think of it that way. I look at it as it's a challenge and yet it's also an opportunity for us to pull together and work together and do the right thing by the students. Because at the end of the day, we do want our students to be able to read, write, and problem solve quickly and fast on their feet, regardless of the subject area. We want them to be critical thinkers, whether they're in elementary school or secondary. And, you know, we want them to have every opportunity available to them regardless of where they're from, Blackstone, Millville, or any other community around us. They deserve that. And this budget is definitely placing a great many things at risk. So with that said, I just would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and come before you. I don't recall in my six years us ever being afforded this opportunity to speak to the committee prior to a certification. I'm not going to lie to you that the faculty and staff of our buildings are very nervous, very anxious, and yet they're also very focused and very purposeful in keeping their eyes on the children and doing an incredible job. And they'd like to know that, you know, they have their opportunities protected so food's on their table and roofs are over their heads too. I think we all want to have that kind of peace of mind going forward. So it does behoove us to work together and stay together and continue to champion this work as we go through the budget process. So again, many thanks for this opportunity and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for our administrators?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very, very much. I know that Dr. Thompson has a couple of things he wants to say, so.
Yeah, I think it's important that the community, and I know the committee knows this, but I think it's important that the community knows that we put together a needs-based budget that would put this district on par with where it should be. And that original number was twenty-four million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, a hundred and five dollars. That's the amount of money it would take to have all the things that we need in our classrooms and in this district. This budget is far from that. And my quick math counts 1.9 million short at least of that. And I want to just highlight a few things that have been on the budget and put forward for the past three years that I've been here that are not moving us forward. Years ago, an art teacher was cut out of the elementary school, which then pushed our reading specialist into a special position where they're offering preps. And that is wrong on many levels. First of all, you're taking your creativity opportunity away from our elementary students and you are taking reading intervention away from struggling readers. That has been put in the budget for the last three years and we have not been able to support it. In this budget is no new science text for the high school that are needed. No money for science supplies. You heard Mrs. Desai speak very well to that. It is a totally different way of teaching science. It is the way science should be taught. The jobs of the future are going to be based around science and math, critical thinking, and working in groups. Exactly what those frameworks are written for. We have excellent teachers here. They will do the best they can, but they will not have, at least at this first blush, will not have the materials they need to do that. The state is expecting all districts to implement those science standards this year. This budget looks at it, we need to have a comprehensive writing program. The money for that is greatly reduced. If you look at our MCAS scores, that is an area for growth. And I know that if we give our teachers the proper training and materials, they will do just as well as they did with that math program. Significant cuts in technology. The state is requiring us this year to test fourth and eighth grade. The initial rumblings coming out of the department event is that they want to add another grade. This district does not have the technology capability to do that. You have computers in your elementary school that really should be, should be used in a library to hold books up. And I won't even get into Chromebooks and really getting Google apps, which is how collaboration will have, will happen in the 21st century, happening in your classrooms. No data team. And this is a big invisible cut. People don't see this, but we had a team, a person at each school who would facilitate discussions about how, about student performance at a building level and at a district level. That's not happening, will not happen next year. No additions to our bookroom. People have worked very, very hard to build an incredible bookroom. The secret to that is to keep adding books to the bookroom. We will not be doing that next year. Reduced PD, basically to zero. And if the administration's skinny budget comes to pass, professional development will not happen in this district next year. That is Title II and Title II-A money and that is initially being taken away from public education. And it won't even start on Title I, which work with your economically disadvantaged. If that money goes to vouchers, we have another significant problem. Social emotional programming. This is a dramatic need, not just in this district, but across the Commonwealth and across the nation. We have talked repetitively over three years to bring in a social emotional program. We have not had the capacity to do the training and bring in the materials to do that, to make sure our children are socially emotionally ready to handle the rigors and stress going forward. Our teachers do a great job addressing that, but we do not have a consistent, comprehensive program throughout our district and that's not a good idea either. Digital citizenship. Another program that is desperately needed, but has not been brought forth because we do not have a budget that supports this. We have incredible people in this district. You've heard from the leadership. They really care about the kids in this community. This is a great community. I spend time walking around the school classrooms in every single building. You have some of the most capable and able young people I've ever seen. They will take to anything you give them. We need to give them the best products out there. With the great teachers we have, we're going to get great results. The people who grow up here, stay here. This is, this is an investment in your community and your future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thompson. So what we have in front of us is from March 8th, the superintendent recommended a budget of twenty-three million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seventy-eight dollars. That is a 7.6% increase to our FY '17 operating budget. So the committee has met several times, knowing a 7.6% increase is beyond a fathomable number to either of our towns, but it is what we need. We have met several times to, to try to work that number out to a better place, but keeping all of the kids in the forefront of that discussion. We've looked at different percentage increases, we looked at different number increases and they all, none of them work. None of them provide everything that was just- None of them provide everything that was just asked of us from all of our administrators, and, and that's hard because it's not good enough for the kids. So we do have in front of us a few, few budget recommendations that we had worked through, and tonight we do have to certify an operational budget for FY18.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco. I have spent the last month reaching out to our U.S. senators, Senator Markey, Senator Warren, our representative in Congress, Jim McGovern, our Senator Ryan Fatman in Boston, our representative Kevin Kuros, to let them know that they need to do better because the problem of the burden on our towns is because at the federal level and the state level, everything is being cut or reduced. Just yesterday, in Washington, the debate on the Unaffordable Care Act would propose to take away all Medicaid reimbursements for students' therapeutic services. The president's preliminary budget proposes to eliminate Title II-A, which is the professional development that our staff and faculty so desperately need. Title I, which helps our neediest, most disadvantaged children, is being rerouted and redirected to vouchers and to urban areas. Again, that takes away what we need to operate. It puts more and more pressure on our local municipal budgets, and as we all know, they rely heavily on property tax. It is not equitable. It is not what public education is supposed to be in this country, and yet we are held to the highest standards by the Office of Civil Rights, by the U.S. Department of Ed, by our own Massachusetts Department of Education to make sure that we meet all of that criteria with declining or no revenue offsets or reimbursements or grants. And the list that has gone away in the last three years is just unbelievable, and what's on the table going forward is going to put more and more pressure. So as your superintendent, I have to keep the leadership team and our professional and support staffs engaged with the hope and maintain the morale that we can do the job, knowing that the school committee has to come up with a number that is affordable for our It is an impossible situation. I was happy to hear Monday evening in a joint meeting that the town of Millville is proposing to look at an operational override. That is not a dirty phrase. After a generation of two and a half in our state, many towns need to raise more revenue. At the end of the day, it's all about the students, your children and grandchildren. And we all know the ripple effect of producing strong, motivated young adults to move forward. And we also see in many areas what a disconnected educational environment does to young children, and the social costs and the economic costs that that produces. And as many of our leadership team have reiterated, we have a terrific educational community. I don't want to take Mr. Cameron's news, but I hope he's going to share it at some point soon. But we have parents throughout this district who do everything and give up so much of their time and their own resources to support our students because we can't get the necessary support from our state budget and our federal budget. And it puts so much pressure on our local budgets. So because we can't afford everything, we piece it together. So it's, do you pay me in property tax and municipal revenue, or do we pay out-of-pocket over and over and over each year? But we should be very proud as an educational community of what we have. Our middle schoolers talked to the International Space Station a year ago, an astronaut, Tim Our high schoolers went down to Brown University and got to play in the 3D and 4D labs. We offer tremendous enrichments, tremendous education. We are heading in the right direction, but we need everybody's support. I will close with two dates, May eighth, which is Millville's town meeting, and May thirtieth, which is Blackstone's town meeting. And if you live in our communities, if you have friends who do, I would urge everyone to be there, to engage in our town government. Last year, a year ago, the school committee certified a budget, an operating budget of twenty-two million, five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. That was the right number for us to operate this year. But we didn't get it. We didn't get a budget until September first. We ended up with a budget of twenty-two million, seventeen thousand. You heard Dr. Thompson, you've heard from our administrators, twenty-three million, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars is our needs-based budget. It's not a level service budget. It's what we need to do our jobs. However, we know that's not affordable in our current financial environment amongst all tiers of government. We also know that if we can get through this year, we hope that there is other opportunities at the state and federal level and at the local level to improve our financial picture. We have used up our resources as a financial entity, as a local regional district. We have applied all of our assets to this year's budget. Our special ed reserve account called Circuit Breaker, our excess and deficiency, which is our checkbook stabilization account, we are way below what is a safe limit to maintain in that account. And yet our towns also struggle with that same dynamic. So my proposal to the school committee is to adopt a budget of twenty-two million, five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars to certify tonight. That amount, as you will hear, is expensive but necessary. It also is over a million dollars short of what we truly need. And I will continue to pound on our senator's door and to look for other funding opportunities. But for the here and the now, that is the absolute minimum that we can live with for next year. And as you have heard, it will be a struggle to do that. But we will find a way because we have talented people. Just like we teach our students to respect differences, to work together to solve problems, to understand opposing points of view and find middle ground, that's what we need to do as an educational community at our two town meetings coming up, May eighth in Millville, May thirtieth in Blackstone. Thank you very much.
So now I'm looking for motion for the certification of the FY18 budget. Do we want to go around and do each one?
I'll read the whole thing.
Thank you, Bill.
Motion, move to adopt the gross operating budget for the 2017 to 2018 school year in the amount of twenty-two million, five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Is there a second, Jane? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous?
I make a motion to move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce the said gross operating budget for the 2017-2018 year. Chapter 70, ten million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine. Regional transportation, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. School choice charter offset, negative two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventeen. Above reimbursements total, eleven million, sixty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-two. The total net operating budget for 2017-2018 is eleven million, five-hundred-and-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to move to assess the amount of eight million, five-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2017-2018 year, which includes six million, two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for the minimum contribution, one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand in exclusionary costs, and nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars in supplemental investment.
Motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Georgette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
I make a motion to move to assess the amount of two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2017-2018 year, which includes two million, twenty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars for the minimum contribution, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars in exclusionary costs, and three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars in supplemental investment.
Motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2017-2018. Medicaid, sixty thousand. Interest, four thousand. E and D, a hundred-and-forty thousand, for total, two-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars.
Motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous?
Make a motion move to adopt a capital interest budget in the amounts of four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-three to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars for the FWH Middle School, a hundred-and-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight for the BMR High School sewer connection, and a hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one for the roof projects.
Motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last motion is to move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of two-hundred-and-five-thousand, nineteen to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes sixty-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty for the FWH Middle School, forty-thousand, four, forty-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-two for the high school sewer connection, and a hundred-and-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven for the roof projects.
Motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the budget we just certified is a two-and-a-half percent increase from our operating budget in this current school year. And I just want to point out that we started at a 7.6 percent increase request from the superintendent. So a lot of work went into this. We are going to do things a little different this year. We are not recertifying this number. This is the number we have to operate on next year, and it is a bare minimum budget. I think the next thing we're going to move to is the report of the superintendent, which is actually part of the budget.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco. Two quick items. One is on the agenda, and that's revolving, involving preschool tuition. The other is the fact that our buildings, our schools are well-maintained as best as we can by an outstanding staff of custodians. Four of our five schools are in desperate need of renovations. The middle school is the one school that has, is in a good spot right now, although, it has given us some expenditures to keep it well-maintained. I met today with the Massachusetts School Building Authority representatives who toured all three of our elementary schools because I submitted all three of those statement of interests for accelerated repair projects for each one of our schools, the Kennedy, the Maloney, and Millville Elementary. I also submitted a core renovation project for the high school, which will be a substantially more complicated project, and I would expect that they will come to visit us in, sometime in later in May. And there's a very strict timeline for being invited to the next round to see if these projects will be accepted. All three accelerator repair projects for the elementary school can be accepted in the same year. We really can't wait. As, as Dr. Hahe mentioned, you know, all of our schools have major issues from time to time that can, in some cases, shut us down. So it's important that we have this in the pipeline. It will be a busy year working with the School Building Authority, who will reimburse the costs of the projects that are accepted under their guidelines at 57.74 percent. So the town share is a little over 42 percent. That's a great deal by MSBA. That's funded by a penny on the sales tax. So depending upon how big that number is each year, equates to the number of projects across the state. There are 73 accelerator repair projects before MSBA, of which three are ours. However, meeting with them today, they did not give me any discouragement. So we keep our fingers crossed that we continue to move forward with that process because that is something that we need to do to invest in the long term and in the future for healthy and safe environments. One, one item that we did take a look at was our preschool tuition. As, as Dr. Hahe had mentioned, we have outstanding programs throughout the district, but our preschool is certainly well-recognized, but we are also undervaluing it in terms of what surrounding districts charge for their preschool. We currently charge $12.50 a day. The proposal would be to simply raise it $2.50 a day to $15 per day. That would provide us some additional revenue and still keep us well-under other districts. So I would ask that the committee approve a tuition increase for our preschool of $2.50 a day to $15.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve preschool tuition to increase from $12.50 a day to $15 a day. Motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve and Jane.
I have one.
All right, any discussion for the committee? No. Okay, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to school committee forum. Steve?
First off...
First off, I'm glad to see so many people here tonight. This is great. Glad you're here tonight, but we need you on May 8th and May 30th. So please come back with 15 or 20 like-minded friends each. We definitely need you. So, I'm not kidding. We need you. We really, really do. You heard the horror show that was laid out here tonight. We need you on May 8th. We need you on May 30th. We're not fooling around. This is not, it's not a smokescreen. We truly, truly need you. I've been on the committee for nine years now. Tonight's my last meeting. When I first came on board, Mitt Romney was the governor. When he first came on, the state of Massachusetts was $2 billion in the red. And he looked and he saw that the various cities and towns had approximately $2 billion in their stabilization accounts. So in essence, he kind of flipped that. What that did then, then that really put the pressure on the cities and towns. And in that time, it's been, support for public education has been sinking every single year, putting more and more pressure on the towns. So then, what the towns have to do, they truly have no choice. They have to raise their taxes. And then the second part of that, which people don't like to talk about is, once you've raised your taxes, you have to then collect your taxes. It's not good enough just to send tax bills. We have to go and collect those bills as well. So again, that's pressure, more pressure on the cities and towns. You know, we could talk all night about unfunded mandates. There's new every, every week, it seems, more and more. So bottom line, there's more pressure on the cities and towns, more pressure on the townspeople to come out to the meetings on May 8th. We really, really need you there. Again, this is my last meeting. When I first came on, my son was in third grade. He's a freshman in college now and doing very well. And it's because of the education he got here. And so I, at the time, I didn't say, oh, I'm going to be on for a long time. Let me see him through his elementary years. Let me see him through his middle school years, turn it to his high school years, turn it into one extra year. But, and truly, the best part of those were the, this has always been my crusade. I always want to see kids here. I want to see teachers here presenting. Because it's easy to look at each other and look at the empty chairs and say, this, we're the district, but we're not. The district is the kids. It really is. So that's why it was always my crusade. Bring them out, bring them out. Show us what we do well. Show the townspeople what we do well. That's always been sort of my crusade. The budget time of year, it's the best time of year in some ways, but it's the worst. It's best because I love seeing the principals come forward in the early stages with their plans. It's great to see. It's great to see that spark back in their eye. Actually, I think I've been here longer than anyone in this room, truly. I've sat on a lot of interviews with some of the people here. And it's great to see some great ideas. I'd go home, I'd, this is great. We met these great people. They got these great ideas. I really hope we get this one. And we get them. And then you slowly see them sink every year. They're a little less enthusiasm. It's not a criticism. It's reality. You're beaten down year after year. Justin, you talked about fatigue. It's absolutely true. You get beaten down every year. And then, you know, it's hard to see the great planes you have just kind of get washed away because of the budget. It really is tough to see. But again, I truly think the strength is not here. It's not on this table. It's out there. We've had, I don't know, five superintendents in the last seven years. I think seven in the last 11. But what that does is, again, I think I mentioned when Mike was here, it put more pressure on the administrators and they kind of bonded together and they pulled us through. You know, where I met some great people, you know, some great school committee members. But truly, I think the strength is out in our buildings. It's, it's the teachers. It's the staff. It's the administrators. It's the parents. The PTOs have raised unbelievable amounts of money. What the band boosters have done is unbelievable. There's a reason that we have two-time national champions. You know, Todd has a big part of it, obviously. And, you know, so does Buddy, but it's the parents. The parents that are there at Foxborough Stadium slinging sausages and all that. That's, that doesn't come easy. So again, the strength, I don't think, it's not a criticism in this end. The strength is out in the buildings. It really is. And, you know, I've enjoyed the time here, but, you know, again, we need people at the town meetings in May. That's, that's going to be very pivotal for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Tara?
Thank you, Steve. I think that was a nice recap. So I'll leave it at that and just, we'll miss you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And you, Bill?
Yep.
Thank you, Tara. Wendy?
I just want to thank Bill and Steve for their service. But I think people need to understand how hard it is to be at this table and try so hard to keep teachers in the classroom and, you know, students at the forefront. It's very easy to go on social media and really talk the talk, but it's another thing to be a part of something. And I think parents are a part of something. I think administrators are a part of something. And I think we all carry a certain role. And it's just important to keep that going. So, thank you, Steve and Bill, for the amount of time that you've spent on this committee. It's not easy. We all leave our families at night and we all try to do the best that we can for our district and our towns. But it's not easy. And I appreciate the work and the time that you've put in. And best of luck.
Thank you, Wendy. First thing I have, actually, for all of us is every year, we usually present the scholarships at awards night. And I've received communication from the guidance office asking if we are going to continue with that this year. So I just wanted to make sure everyone saw that in the reading folder. And I will sign this, send it in. And they will be presented to the students on awards night at the high school, to the seniors. Mr. Himmelberger mentioned the meeting we attended in Millville on Monday. It was with our FinCom members and Board of Selectmen. And we had some pretty in-depth discussion over where our budget has been, where it needs to go, where the town stands. And I think we both understand each other on what the needs are. And I hope that with our certification tonight of a 2.5% budget, that they understand that they were heard at that table. With that being said, there was also another comment made about our new roof on our high school. And I just want, I just, I can't let it go. I have to clarify something. We were pretty hard-pressed on why we don't have solar panels on our high school roof. It's a brand-new roof. It's a flat roof. It's sunny. And, you know, we were basically chastised for not taking in that revenue as a district and a missed opportunity. And personally, I think it's, it's an open opportunity. But I don't think it's recognized enough on how much is contributed to our schools out of the parents' pockets every day. And they pay their taxes. If we did not have BMMA, there would be no, there would be no marching band. There would be no marching band. We would not have a budget to support what that band does every year. And the money that is brought in from the boosters for our band, we would not have it. And that is the parents supporting the boosters. Sure, there are fundraisers. Guess who's buying the products? It's the parents. It's the families. And that goes for our PTOs. Mr. Cameron just told us that the middle school PTO has raised over $200,000. That is the parents. I'm now curious what our elementary BPO and MSPA has done. And I'm sure those numbers are phenomenal as well. But again, it's the parents in our towns. Parents pay user fees for every activity their kids do in our buildings. We cannot give it to them. They pay to be in the band. They pay to play a sport. We're increasing the price of preschool. You're paying for your littlest ones to come to school and we have to up the price to create revenue for our district. But we're accused of not checking all those opportunities. And we have many sports boosters that I love because every dollar they raise goes right back to the kids that are on those teams. It's been talked about a few times. There should be a whole school sports booster. You know, honestly, in the last week, I think that might be the worst idea. We haven't talked about it in a long time, but I don't think it would be fairly distributed. And I think the teams that are raising the money need to be able to benefit from that money directly. And it certainly is a below-average budget for what we want to be in exemplary school. So I just, I couldn't let that go. I have to, it has to be recognized on how much additional revenue is coming in to our buildings and it's coming from the parents. And nobody wants to talk about taxes and increasing, but that's going to affect them too. And guess what? They're still going to buy the kids fundraiser item. They're still going to pay their user fees and their taxes are going to go up. And it is something that has to happen. And I will end with saying thank you very much to Bill, who has been here for four years with us, and Steve for nine. Our meetings would not be what they are without either of you. And I hope you tune in to watch in your free time. But thank you very much for your dedication. Bill, would you like?
Me. So, I'm going to start by thanking everybody. It's been, I mean, the four years, it's been almost a decade for me. It's been over a decade for Steve in terms of the finance committee work he did in his town and the finance committee work I did in my town. And Wendy's right. And I don't say that enough here. Wendy is right in terms of when she says it's hard. This, this right here is advanced citizenship. It's not the PTO. And the PTO is wonderful. But this is advanced citizenship and you're going to have difficult conversations. And there's no doubt, you can go back and look at the film. I have a big mouth and I have a hothead. And, but it's all driven through advocacy, through the love of my town and this district. My kids are just about to graduate. My son's a freshman. But it's all based on advocacy and love for this district. And even though I've disagreed with people around this table and I've disagreed with people in the community, people around this table, present and past, I've never questioned your values or your core beliefs about what you believe in, in terms of helping the school district move forward. With that said, I also have to recognize someone who I think has been here more consistently than anybody in both towns. And I want him to know, Joe Repoza, that of, even though we disagree on a lot of things, I've never questioned your values either and your core beliefs. So it's important that you hear that. With that said, there are great moments on this committee when kids are here. There are really sucky moments during budget season. And it's the equivalent of politically in the towns and fiscally in the towns of navigating through quicksand. And at this point, we're up to our eyeballs. This is the worst budget year I've ever experienced in almost a decade because we're dismantling education. And that's all I'm going to say about it because you've heard enough about that here. We're dismantling education in this town. I don't know why someone would move here, and I hate to say that. I hate to say that. It could be so much better. And there's a lot of reasons for it, but we have to value it much more better. It's not okay. You know, even though we just, we voted at 2.5%, there's three pages of cuts on there. People that work for us now will not be here next year, even at that level of money that we're asking. And people are going to think, I'm going to hear it at town meetings and recite it over and over again. You can do, you can do more. No, we can't do anymore. We're at the wall. We're going over the cliff. And that's all I can say about it. And if you think I've been passionate here and been a loudmouth here, you're right. But I'm going to be even a bigger loudmouth as a citizen and as, at the town meetings. So I appreciate the leadership we've had with Alan and David the past three years and with Dr. Davis the year before that. And of course, the leadership and the teachers. They're, you know, what we try to do and support every year. But if you remember anything, it has been like navigating through quicksand. And we're at our eyeballs. So I appreciate everyone here and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. If it looks like I'm crying, it's because I have a cold, not because of what Bill said.
It's okay to cry.
As most of you know, I have a 12-year-old daughter. And when she was little, I told, I told her she could be anything she wanted to be. Anything. But there were three things she had to be. She had to be kind. She had to be brave. And she had to be fair. And I think as we go through this budget process, we need to ask that of each other. We need to be brave. We need to make some hard choices. We've done that as a school committee. And as Aaron said, and I feel like Carol Brown and Aaron stole all my thunder.
I had no notes.
But we've asked a lot of the parents already. We've asked parents not only to pay user fees and this budget will even add more to that, but for school supplies. We've placed a burden on our teachers to do more with less. And yes, we've placed a burden on our towns. We have. But we're a regional district and we have to be fair. And last year's budget process was hard too. And there was a lot of name-calling and it was really negative. And I just really hope this year through the process, we've, we've placed a huge burden on the school. We will lose, as Bill said, some, some good people, some good programs. We won't move forward. We won't replace key strategic positions that we've fought for years to get into the district. We've made those hard cuts. We've gone from 7.6 to 2.5. We've made them. We think we've done our best. We have to stand strong. Every single parent in this district has to stand strong for their kids. They have to be at that meeting. And they have to be kind to each other. And they have to look at it fairly. We have to share the burden among everyone. Not just the parents, not just the teachers. Our towns have got to find a way, and it's going to be hard. And it's going to be tough. But they have got to find a way to support this district because it is a regional school district and it is important to the future of this community. And so I hope through this, we'll all be brave. We'll make some hard choices. We'll be kind to each other and we'll be fair.
Thank you, Jane.
I just want to say thanks to Bill and Steve for your service. And thank you to the principals for being here tonight. We've had a long day, but anyway, I thank you for everyone for being here tonight.
Okay. And our next meeting is scheduled for,
do we have another public forum?
Thursday, April 13th, 2017. That is, all the meetings are here. Thursday, April 27th, 2017, that is our next two public meetings. Again, a reminder for the town meetings, May 8th in Millville. It's held at the Millville Elementary School, hosted by the town of Millville. With babysitting. With babysitting. And May 30th is Blackstone. It is held at BMR, posted by the town. Again, without your support at those meetings, we won't even be able to sit here and talk about it.
We will die.
Okay, and looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Steve.